Three year. Trend analysis of what we're doing. So property tax. This one's a is 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 a big unknown as we know right now. It's my understanding that that the average property assessment in Lake County, including the city of Ludville, went up like eighty five percent. This year I've talked to people who doubled tripled. I talked to one person whose property tax quadrupled. So that having been said, I think we have a huge problem in terms of the people who have lived here all their lives who paid fifteen thousand dollars for their house and now it's. Now it's appraised that you know seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's 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 out of control and absurd. So. Initiative HH, which will be on the the state ballot. Is a is a very, very convoluted initiative. It it has proposition. Yeah. It it has some some positives, although the positives aren't defined. They don't define then what the limitations will be against property tax. They don't do that. And on and on the on the flip side, it unleashes the dogs of paper. You know, because it does away with with table refunds. And they're going to use that part. Partially to backfill some of the some of the property tax issues, but there are a whole bunch of other things in there that are just very tricky. So. At first I thought I would vote for it, and now I'm really struggling with it because. I like the basic concept of controlling property tax year over year, but they haven't defined how they're going to do that. And there are parts of this problem which can get really great issues in the state. So. I'll leave it at that. So what I did here as a projection. So what I've been suggesting for some time is we should look at this carefully as a city. We're only one taxing entity. But then we should declare mills based on what we need as a city. Not based on eighty five percent increase. And so all I did was plug in inflation here, two years of inflation, which I I project at thirteen percent total.
So with regard to this revenue for property tax, a couple of things, we. We're going to find out what the estimate is from our assessor. So the mayor's going to set up a meeting with our assessor and me so that. We can get the estimate of what the property tax will be based upon the new assessment. That information should be coming out shortly. So that is what the mayor is saying is we've heard, you know, property tax could go up by sixty percent. So. What we've done with this is the mayor's just based it on thirteen percent inflation. Once we get the data from the assessor, we can make some decisions because. Prop HH is going to be voted on before you'll vote on this budget. So we will know whether or not Prop HH is going to take effect. Before this you vote on this budget. So right now as a placeholder, we're going to say thirteen percent inflation. If the assessor gives us the data and it's actually. Property taxes are going up well over thirteen percent, then we can make some decisions after we see what happens with Prop HH. One of the things that we can do that we've talked about. Lake County Build a Generation had an intern attorney intern who helped us with some research about ways that you can. Do property tax relief and we feel the best approach for the city, given our amount of staffing and ability to. Implement would be just a reduction in the mills. So what would happen is we we put this placeholder in here at thirteen percent inflation. So we know what our revenue is for property tax. Then we see what happens with Prop HH. If it passes, then we can decide what we need to do. If it doesn't pass, you know, then there's option of reducing the mills. We don't certify the mills until. December fifteenth.
It's also fifteen.
So you'll pass the budget and certify the mills at the same time. So what we have said in this budget right now. You'll see property tax, I mean, a five million dollar budget, it's, you know, about nine hundred six thousand dollars. It isn't our, you know, standard revenue. But it is important. So. Some cities are doing two different budgets. Some cities are more tied to property tax. We felt this approach is the best approach for now so that we can get a handle on what our revenues are. And we're not putting in a sixty percent increase because I think regardless of proposition HH, we need to. Provide some sense of property tax. So that's where we came.
I guess my worry with. Not so much from the homeowner perspective, but just from the renter perspective where that could be a little bit problematic. I know that a lot of landlords tend to. Carry on that tax. Pretty common thing to use. I just don't know that the renters would see that direct assistance. And obviously, it's sounds like it's what we can do best, but. In lack of any, you know. And maybe this isn't attached to the. Using property tax to relieve property tax, and maybe this is more attached to rental relief and we can get to it at some other point, but. That seems to be like the missing puzzle piece for me is considering that, you know, over. Getting close to fifty percent of our units aren't owned by. Their primary residents. So.
You're exactly right. If we provided property tax relief, there's no guarantee that would be passed along to the renters.
And that that seems like a. Given our current. Community homeownership rates, it seems like a concern to me. That said, I totally understand that the community does own their homes, does definitely need this. So it's not that I'm opposed to it by any means, just how can we? Help alleviate the renters as well.
I don't think we can. I mean, you know, the answer, unfortunately, it all depends on what the property owners decide to charge for rent.
So it 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 can, well, in in an indirect way. If your analysis of landlord's behavior is correct. In that if there is a gigantic increase, they pass it along to their renters. By providing a property tax relief, we are providing some relief to the renters in that that would not be passed along to them and and substantially.
In an ideal world, but we've also seen them abuse it and say, well, whatever.
We're doing what we can, pulling what lever we can with this budget.
Sure.
Okay. Let's visit partnership tax. No reason to change that as far as I can tell. Sales tax, we're right now about forty thousand dollars ahead of of last year ahead of budget. And I project based on on trends, it will be about six hundred thousand dollars ahead by the end of the year. So I took four hundred thousand of that and put it in the budget. I didn't want to take it all. Just from a conservative standpoint. To leave some breathing room if if taxes contract. Next year because we've never really know. So I wanted to leave some. Fudge factor in there for taxation in twenty twenty four. I hope the trend continues, but.
Well, and it has, you know, it has continued. The the end result is that, yeah, I think the mayor has projected projections for sales tax revenue for last year. How much we were going to be over is pretty much spot on. And, you know, with this, the two hundred thousand dollars remain in our reserves, which, as you know, are quite healthy. There. You know, three point eight through four four million with a recommended reserve of two million. So. I think the mayor's numbers are more than fair to say putting four hundred thousand in the twenty twenty four budget is. I think reasonable.
Next is marijuana city excise tax. We know. We just did a settlement of thirty thousand dollars. As you guys know, you had to approve it. So that will bump up the the year to fifty thousand, which was what our projection. But that particular business says they're not going to be doing transfers again next year. So we can't project their thirty thousand dollars. And so I I dropped it to twenty thousand knowing what we know.
And they hadn't curtailed their business even before this on. So I think that was just their.
The handwriting was kind of on the wall. Next one severance tax. Boy, is this a crap sheet. You see that in twenty twenty one, we did forty four thousand dollars. Then in twenty twenty two, two hundred nineteen thousand dollars. This year. We had budgeted eighty thousand, then we got three hundred ninety nine thousand. So I reached out to this department of revenue. That was quite the process to get to the person I finally ended up talking to. They still don't have a projection. And so I said, okay, just I don't know what to put in. I honestly don't.
And and the frustrating part about it is what we wanted to know. I mean, yes, they know they can't. Project it always. What we wanted to know is why did it go up so much? What what is the factor that we can maybe look at economic economic factors and say, well, maybe that was anomaly or maybe that won't happen again. They couldn't tell us. So we we think perhaps we haven't found the expert who can tell us that, but as the mayor's right, this is. This is a number without information behind it, and that's frustrating to us. There's a ton of information on the Department of Revenue's website that had to pay your tax. But not so much on how to receive it and what it is. We don't even know. Exactly what industry, I mean, we know what industry is comprised of, but we don't know if there's a particular. Extraction facility that had a banner year that caused this gigantic spike that now they're offline. We we don't know. And we have not been able, just so you know, we tried to get that information, the mayor has and and. Was not able to.
She was she was very nice. She was just.
He didn't know.
She couldn't. She was noncommittal. Okay, next one franchise tax. We're trending up on franchise tax. We have been for a couple of years. We're at a hundred and one thousand through two thirds of the year. So I just projected it a hundred and fifty thousand. We did a hundred eighty thousand, you know. Last year, so hard to know what the real number is. Penalties and and delinquent tax. That's turning up slightly. Business licenses are about the same. Liquor licenses. No real difference.
Oh, you skipped over building permits.
Oh, there it is. Building permits.
Yeah, I think you wanted.
Oh, yeah, I do. Thank you. Buildings permits, we currently don't collect building permits. You know, the county does that because the building departments with the county. We in our budget, you'll see that we are we are proposing to bring the building department back in house. But we don't think we could do that until by the early second quarter. Because of that, this eighty four thousand dollars is about three quarters of the. Building permits that were collected last year, which I think was a hundred. Twenty four thousand. And so we went ahead and put that number in as an expectation. I actually think it would probably be more than that. But again, I'm fairly conservative in my approach to the budget.
And that's without raising any building permit fees.
That is true.
Does the county have an opinion about that since they've been doing all the building permits?
Yes, they do. And I'll be meeting with the county. The first meeting to discuss this. I've already had one. Second meeting is in a week.
But you have already mentioned it, Dan, that we're.
Yes.
Thinking of going down the road.
And I I have to have multiple evaluation meetings with the county. So this it'll be it'll be an evaluation and implementation process.
And that would be then in your under your purview.
Yeah, part part of this would be, yes, we would need to have hire a staff person or consult these services out like the county is already doing.
Marijuana application fee, really no change. We have five five marijuana businesses. We don't anticipate any more. Retail marijuana tax. That comes from the state. It's trending down. So I put it in at fifty five thousand dollars. Excavation.
Oh, on the excavation, so. Yeah. Based on previous, yeah. So that that's in part the number of excavations is higher. Because of that Excel energy gas line project upgrade. So you will see that when Excel finishes that project drop off a little bit, but their project continues for another two years.
Yeah, that was really a five year plan. Now it's a six year plan. So, you know, we got a couple of years left.
And that's the part because we didn't want as many crews. All summer long, also, we just need to reduce the number of crews and kind of. Extend the time to split the baby.
Also held up, fell behind. They just couldn't keep up with their own schedule. Next one, short term rental fees. All I do is round up to fifty seven thousand dollars. You don't see, I don't anticipate any change.
If we lower the amount, well. I guess for the time being that twenty twenty four budget would remain, never mind. If we were to lower it, it wouldn't impact this twenty twenty four season since we'd be doing a. Sunset if we agree to lowering the number of units from one seventy.
Well, that's actually a pretty good point. I hadn't really thought about that. We may have to look at that.
Yeah.
If, you know, but I can't worry about that until it happens.
Right, and it's a minimal amount anyways, I think.
It would just be true attrition, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That is true. That's kind of what I was thinking. It probably wouldn't.
Couple of things here that really didn't change. If you have any questions, please ask me. My next thing is animal shelter fees. We're seeing a downward trend there. I dropped it by five thousand dollars. Hard to know what what the actuality is there. The next one, animal shelter, that's fifty percent. And the animal shelter budget that they've given us. Is pretty high. I mean, it it's. It went up significantly. So those are decisions internally we're going to have to make. So that number varies depending on what we finally decide their budget is going to be. But right now it's a hundred and sixty thousand showing their total budget of three hundred and twenty thousand, whereas last year was two hundred and sixty thousand. So that's. That that number will move depending on what we decide on their budget. Motor vehicle, no real change there. State highway maintenance, the same every year. Highway users tax. CML has given us a. A a a projection of a hundred and twenty two thousand, like a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty four, something like that.
Yeah, that's not based on our estimates. It's based on what we're good at.
What they what they told us it's going to be. So we don't have to guess on that one. Police surcharge, I've dropped it. We're hoping that in the future, there are several things and you'll hear from the judge in terms of immunity court. Fees as well, that we're hoping those will go up as as we we hope we see more focus by our police force in terms of. Of enforcement. And and writing. Cases into municipal court instead of county court. But that's a different subject. Court fees, actually, we had, this is a conversation that Lori and I had. We have about fifty four hundred dollars sitting. In the account and it has its own separate account. And I'm projecting we'll add about fifteen hundred dollars to that. So that's where the sixty nine sixty one came from a thousand dollars.
And and why do we have that money sitting in the account? We just haven't spent the budget.
Haven't ever spent it, yeah.
So Judge Blad, I hope you heard that. We made we're making sure that gets to you. Yeah, I was looking for that as my rather than see that.
Traffic fines clearly are way down. I wasn't quite sure whether to project something more aggressive than that. I dropped it to five hundred dollars. We'll see what happens in twenty twenty four. Other fines. Tracking approximately the same. Warrant fees, we just took them out. Nothing's happened with warrant fees for three years. Earnings on deposits, we've seen some a little bit of positive in terms of operating account. Everything else is paid about the same. Miscellaneous, no reason to change that. Reimbursements to the EV charging station, it just hasn't been used as much as we expected. So we have less cost, but we also have less revenue. So I dropped the revenue to ten thousand based on on. And I think for part of that last year, we had some problems with a charging station. Charger Colorado really, or yeah, it just it just didn't work. And then someone broke one of the prongs on one of the. The outlets and it it took forever to get that fixed. So I can't tell. Exactly where we're going with that, but but it's been. I'd say the usage has been disappointing and part of it has been the reliability of that charging station. We hear anecdotally nationwide where people try and take trips trips in electric vehicles and they get to a station that has like eight charging stations and all of them are inoperable. You know, so it's a. It's a real problem. Spruce Street House, I dropped that considerably. This year, we we just don't have that many people in there. We now have a management company, so I'm hoping.
I gotta get me to sign that. Well, we have a new tenant in the. Building, so we now have additional income.
Well, it hits the five thousand because we only have seventy four hundred year to date.
I will say, as a discussion Jack and I had this morning. We discussed potentially bringing up the idea of the regional housing authority. Having an in home or regional housing authority like manager, a property manager. Just given the county situation and our situation. So that could be a potential future thing that might impact the twenty twenty four budget.
Well, it should, and I hope it does, but I can't project that right now.
Just ahead.
Yeah, thank you. No, that's great. Great to know. Reimbursements are down. Contract services. That that those are reimbursements. We don't have any in the pipeline. So I just zeroed it out. Consultant fee reimbursement, again. Nothing that we know of was happening in terms of 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 those reimbursements. So no reason to leave it in there. Tabor home revenue. We did about twenty five hundred and house with the eye also about twenty five hundred. That's that's kind of what we project for revenue. That's a donation based. System, but it seems to be working okay. But I don't consider those profit centers anyway. They're they're they're. You know, they're museums. They're they're going to operate in the lost. City administrator grant drops, you know, we we got seventy five percent the first year, fifty percent the second year and the third year then goes to twenty five percent. And then the fourth year, nothing. But that was the way that grant was structured from DOLA. Animal shelter, taper opera house recreation grants. Have no idea where they are with with the new grants that they've applied for with DOLA. In fact, they're. I think they're. They're meeting with DOLA on Thursday. To 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 make their their pitch for the latest grant request, but it really doesn't matter. Those those aren't real revenue numbers anymore. We're strictly, we're strictly a pass through organization and it's not, it's not revenue that's going to fit us. In any way, other than that it's a favor opera house. Same thing is true for this next one, the Department of Justice Grant. We've expended that grant as far as I know. Regardless, it's it's we don't have any more grants in the pipeline that I know of. And that one was. I believe that was for the dash cams. But. It's not in next year's budget. And again, it's irrelevant because if there is a number that plugs in there, it just passes through money. Administrative fee for the fire fund, twenty eight thousand dollars. We get that each year. And the others are, so. Here's what you need to know is this bottom line for twenty twenty three is five million. One hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty four dollars. It's not the five thousand, five million, eight hundred thirty thousand dollars because you back out these big grants. You have to take them out. They're not really. Revenue in our budget. And so the delta between the twenty twenty four budget and the twenty twenty three budget is six hundred eighty one thousand dollars. That would be add six hundred eighty one thousand, nine hundred and sixty four dollars. Basically what we have to spend over and above last year's budget. As of as of right this second.
Mayor, did you mention the accommodations tax? Did I miss that?
Well, the accommodations tax, I did not use that. But that we don't derive any rep that strictly. Its own vehicle where money comes into the accommodations tax and goes out of the accommodations tax. None of it benefits the city directly. In other words, seventy thousand of it goes to the. The director of the regional housing authority. We projected about seven thousand dollars goes to housing, although. We think it'll probably be more than that this year.
And tourism panels and share.
Oh, yeah, tourism panel, sure. One point ninety percent. It's true.
And then for next year, we in our ICA, we agreed to. Have that continue until next year and then we'll review it next year. To see if that.
Well, that's why in perpetuity. So.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why we wouldn't count on that money for the housing.
Of course.
And the tourism panel. Going forward. We just don't know what the amounts will be. Think accommodations tax has its own. Set of numbers inside the budget, Tracy.
Yeah, it's not. It's not revenue toward general.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's revenue. Any any questions, any thoughts about? I mean, some of these things are approximation. Some of them are. If he propositions, I understand that. Good job.
Yeah, I mean, I I it's always great to deliver good news. These revenue projections are. Up. And everything is, other than some minor line items, you know, our major revenues are. It's nice to be able to bring good news because obviously we have to balance budget. So with revenues being up, it's it's easier for us to grant some of the requests that you've heard, you know, from the departments with their goals. So. Oh, did you cover what percent increase you're projecting for the overall budget?
Approximately twelve percent. But that that includes the the building department, which is actually. The costs are going to be greater than than the revenue, at least in the first year. We'll we'll look at that when we look at the planning department's budget. But we'll keep in mind that eighty four thousand dollars as you look at those numbers. And and sometimes, even though DOLA doesn't care. When you balance your budget, DOLA doesn't care about the revenue side. They only care about the expense side. And so you always have to keep in your mind, okay, are there offsets to this in our mind? You know, that help us. Make decisions about what what cost we will bear at any given department. Okay. Next up, we have the municipal court. Judge Floyd.
Who would you recommend to your partners?
You can figure it right here. Pick a spot, any spot. I need to hand these these out there, buddy.
Okay.
These are pages four and five of the budget.
So I'm very happy to hear that revenues are up because I'm here tonight to ask to spend a little bit more of it. Than what is in the draft budget. And some of this flows from conversations that we had. And have been having over the last couple of weeks about court security.
I'd be here about that. I will tell you, the revenues are up. There's no way we balance this budget on these numbers. It's just not going to happen.
I understand.
So just just a cautionary tale.
Wait, when I met with Mayor Lobby to talk about my budget for twenty twenty four, he did mention at that time that what I requested was modest. So I. I planned to stay somewhat modest, but I think.
We'll see about.
I I've I've done a lot of research and I've had a lot of conversations with some of my peers and other. Courts over the last week or so, and I think that it it makes sense to perhaps add a little more money to the municipal court's budget to address some security issues. And the reason for that is in talking with Chief Chavez, the, you know, there may be times when. Officers are unavailable to provide court security. And I will share with you that. In talking with all my peers, especially ones in the small rural courts, without exception, they do all have some form of security. And most of them do have a police officer or a security service that is present during.
We have a security service available to us?
The county uses one when they're shorthanded, so I'm sure we could contact us open. All over.
Okay, all right.
There aren't any in this town that I'm.
Right, right.
But, yeah, they've been using a couple of different services over the last year when they.
You know how important I think this is, so.
Well, and so here's my my request, my suggestion, if you will, in order to make sure that we have some sort of stopgap in the event that there's. Since a level police officer available. In twenty twenty two, I noticed that somehow my court managed to spend sixteen hundred and forty three dollars on professional services. I'm embarrassed to say I don't know what that was for. So it, you know, it there hasn't been any money allocated to the court for professional services. It seems to me that typically that would be, you know, where I think.
Sixteen hundred and forty three dollars in there?
Well, I was going to modestly ask for fifteen hundred overall, but. With that's with the caveat that I also would like to have money for professional services to cover. An associate municipal judge to have backup appointed. I haven't missed any court day. I haven't missed any court dates, and I've always shown up regardless of what time day or night. They say, hey, we picked up so-and-so on a bench warrant. And I'm on my way. But life happens, and just out of an abundance of caution, um. I understand that um Ron Carlson will not be proceeding as the city prosecutor. He is a municipal judge in a half a dozen different um jurisdictions in the area. And so I would like to to have him appointed as the associate municipal judge's backup. And one of the reasons for that typically it's been the county court judge, but for some reason when Jonathan Seamus was promoted to the district court. Um Judge Dunkelman, who's the chief judge of the fifth, you just saw district, is not amenable to. Um County Court Judge Scott filling in as a backup for me.
Okay.
And so and we haven't had to pay for that in the past.
I think it's unfortunate for John Scott as well, but that's just.
But that's what it could be because he's new and he didn't have experience as a judge before he went on the bench and stuff. So part of it would be, you know, I'm asking for fifteen hundred dollars for in the the event, I don't anticipate. But in the event that there isn't a police officer available.
Okay, so do you have any idea what the county's paying for a court session to have security?
I can, I can tell you if you give me two seconds.
I will. I'd like to know, yeah.
Yeah, because they do, like I said, they have a couple of different contracts with. Security providers, which I have access to their contracts.
So bear with me one minute as I get to that real quick.
Just that fifteen hundred dollars doesn't seem like very much.
It isn't, but it's also, you know, I'm sensitive to the notion of not wanting to ask for things. And as you'll see with this draft budget, there are a number of things that the mayor and I agreed not to ask for anymore in my budget. Because either it's absorbed, pulled together with other, you know, um city hall supplies and. That type of thing. And if we haven't spent it, you know, I don't want to just ask for money for the sake of asking for money. So I think there are a couple of areas where we have taken money out of the budget. So perhaps this is a request to somewhat redirect that, but let me bear with me one second as I find.
Yeah, while you're doing it, we could, yeah, please, go ahead, Dana, sorry.
Hi, thanks. I I'm just wondering. How much notice do we know if there will not be? A lead-built police officer available to fill in? Like, is there going to be enough time to en- engage a security service?
That could be an issue, yes. It it absolutely could be an issue, but my anticipation would be if, based on scheduled staffing. Chief Chavez comes to me and says, hey, it looks like I'm not going to have an officer for you for your docket day. This would give me the opportunity to try to um to get somebody up here. And let's see here.
Yeah, so to your point, Dana, that feels pretty iffy, but it's better than nothing, I guess, at least to make some plan.
I didn't bring, anybody got calculator? I can tell you what. So one security officer for the county under the contract they had last year when um. When they were short-staffed, it was nineteen hundred dollars per week. So divided by forty, it should be forty-seven dollars and fifty cents an hour, which is actually really reasonable.
They charge travel time.
That is, yeah, that is, so.
That might be for two hundred bucks a pop.
Depending on where they come from, exactly, exactly.
Well, I'm assuming an hour, yeah, that's that may not be correct.
So and and that's the, I was gonna say, I know we've had a couple of them, and I was trying to look and see who else real quick. Um, citadel.
So I'm gonna take that back. We're gonna say three hundred dollars a pop, but they're coming out of the front range. I don't know.
The one that they use, that the sheriff's office used um in addition to the first one, talk that charge forty dollars an hour. And then plus um mileage.
Okay.
So so the forty dollars both for their court time and for their travel.
Can you tell by looking at where they were based out of?
Um, well, this is, this was a franchise uh group and. So I'm trying to see if it says where they would come from. Right here.
What's the federal violence rate now?
Fifty-five cents, I think, a mile. Yeah, I was gonna say, so I think it's like fifty, I think it is fifty-five cents a mile, because that was one of the other things. I was going to explain why I asked for an increase in travel and such too, because this past weekend, since it was a break, I drove back and forth. Um instead of getting. Is it going up?
TSA's per day rates for twenty twenty-three, sixty-five point five.
Oh, good, great. Okay.
Seven cent increase for the twenty twenty rate of fifty-eight point five.
Okay.
So, but I I know that there, you know, they under this was fifty-six cents per month. And that's that's the other thing too with these companies. You can negotiate what you're gonna pay in terms of for the mileage stuff, but I'm happy to take more money.
I I'd just like to know what the mileage, where they're coming from.
Right.
So we can at least project, what does that mean?
Trying to find, I've got their contract, and that's what I was trying to see if they, I didn't get their proposal that that said where they were coming from. So um but anyway. I I don't anticipate it. It'll be routinely needed, but I would just like to have the the flexibility in there in the event that we do need to. To call someone. And then for the associate municipal judge, I kind of just looked at what we. What I've been paid per hour and to project out an hourly rate um for. And and when I say what I've been paid per hour, for those, we are there, my salary is paid is, my stub says I'm paid based on four hours. Which is not even close. That's what, that might be what I spend the actual time here on docket day, but throughout the rest of the month. Time, it's definitely more than that, but in terms of to make it worthwhile.
You're making minimum wage, that's all I need to know.
Uh well, I I think I'm making minimum, but also in salary exempt, so I don't think the minimum wage will apply to me.
I think they do.
Um but anyway, so so that's, I'm here to ask for an additional fifteen hundred dollars in the budget for professional services and the.
So in in the event we have to have an an associate judge uh fill in, what is that amount?
Well, and that's why I was looking if it did it by an hourly rate, based on my hourly rate, if you will, it's three, it comes out to three hundred thirty dollars an hour. Based on this year's budget, what I've been paid, three hundred thirty dollars an hour for that four hours. So that would be.
Three hundred and thirty dollars an hour?
If it's based on four hours, but if you actually do it based on the other. And I guess what we have been paying the prosecutor, you could also liken it to that is, you know, it has been seven fifty.
Let's just do that, and let's.
So that's a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, if you base, because that's what.
What do you think? Do you think that's a fair, fair rate to bring in a judge?
I I will, yeah, I I I mean.
Would you like to project one time during the year or two times during the year?
Uh well, I'd like to say none, but this is just an event to, just in case. Okay, so if we do that, um and then, because it also has to do with not just the docket, because always. I'm scheduled around the docket day for everything else, so I don't have, there's not a risk of me missing my docket day unless. Now I get hit walking into the building or get sick or whatever, but I'm more concerned about also backup for. Um other things such as responding to arrests on bench warrants, because the state law is such that. They have to be heard, you know, they they have to come before you within forty-eight hours, and if I happen to be. Right on a beach in Mexico at some point.
Okay, so so if if we hire Ron Carlson to be that person. Is he gonna come to Leadville?
Yep.
For a bench warrant?
He, yeah.
And if he does, is that seven hundred fifty dollars?
Well, and I not, it would be travel time, so it's about, he he lives in Summit County, so he said, you know.
Forty-five minutes each way, an hour and a half of travel time plus.
Plus thirty minutes for the, well, you're thirty minutes for to advise the person on the bench.
So it'd be minimum of two hours.
So that ends up three hundred seventy-five dollars.
Each time that might happen.
If that hap, yeah.
Okay, so let's let's say one time he has to cover for you, and one time he has to to come in for a bench warrant. We just don't have much of that. How many bench warrants have you had to show up for in the last year?
Uh well, there have been at least three, um two of which were the same person.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, I mean, I think, I think we have enough to to ballpark it, don't you think?
The the other thing too is one thing I'll say is is I know that when you and I have talked about the budget and your perspective of the budget. And I'll I'll pretend like I'm elected official over at the county right now and say, is all that counts is my bottom line. So that if I stay within my bottom line and my budget, is that really what the focus is? So that if, God forbid, something happens and I need to miss a full day or a couple of different bench warrants or something, there's the flexibility.
We don't really treat the budget like that. So yes, there's always the flexibility to move money around. Uh I would say this, I'm gonna I'm gonna propose twelve hundred dollars for security. And I'm gonna propose fifteen hundred dollars, which might be one, two bench warrants and one coverage on court day. So twenty-seven hundred dollars, is that?
I'm thrilled to have more money. I'm just, you know, I come.
Hundred for professional service.
I would put them in the professional.
So we're talking about twenty-seven hundred dollars for professional services, which will include uh.
Well, and you obviously have my commitment to try, do my best to make sure that it's not spent.
Okay, what else, what else do you have on your budget that you'd like to?
Well, I, the only other thing I was gonna ask is that part of the discussion about security are are things we can do. To, you know, kind of low-hanging fruit. One of the things I've been talking to Chief Chavez about that all the other courts seem to do. Is have a sign similar to this posted on the front door that says you can't bring these things into the court. And one of the reasons for having something like this, and we can either put it under his or I can do. Uh the other municipal court judges I've talked to, they do an order. They do a procedural order that just says, and you post it on the front door.
So um to cut to the chase on that, you can absolutely do that. We had the question of whether or not the city can post on the front door, no weapons are allowed in the building. We would have to have an ordinance to do that, because in order for us to enforce it, we have to have, but let me finish. We would have to have something by law to enforce. However, if you put that on your courtroom door.
Yeah.
You can enforce that with sanctions or your own court order. So that actually cuts to the chase and makes it a little quicker than us having to pass.
That's what I thought. It will, and also too, because I I had said, well, let's go on and do this. That seems low-hanging fruit to me. And the county does it, and I'm not aware of any resolution or ordinance by the county.
Absolutely, because the enforceability of it was the problem for us.
Right.
We needed an ordinance.
Okay.
The to put it on the front door, but if it's your courtroom and you put that on your courtroom door. And someone comes in with a weapon, you can have them removed or you can sanction.
Before they wand the person.
Yeah, well, and I'd like to put it, because we've also done, usually when I issue orders regarding the court, we actually put it on the front door. So and especially like during COVID and stuff, when we were like COVID protocols.
As long as it says they're not allowed in the courtroom, not in the entire building, because we we can enforce the entire border. Does that make sense? Without an ordinance?
I I hear you. Um I'm not, my concern would be. The courtroom is in the building.
I understand.
So to say that it's just in the municipal court, I'm afraid could end up in a situation where somebody's walk. Walks in and they get wand and they're in, and they're like, I'm not in the courtroom yet, and they have, you know, a weapon or some other illegal.
Well, here's the thing is, I'm just gonna tell you, we can ask them to leave, but I'm telling you that we have advice in March that without an ordinance. We cannot enforce it. We don't have an ordinance. It's on the list of things. A thousand things that need to come up on a future agenda, but you can put that on the courtroom door, and you could put it on the front door saying they're not allowed in the courtroom. Because you can enforce that in your own courtroom. I don't have the ability to force enforce that in the city. But can we expand the definition, definition of courtroom?
Yes, then anybody coming to this building is is uh is uh presumed to have access to the court.
And and one of the reasons for that too is we've often used this room, like we have somebody who's unable to do. Well, not only witnesses, but they can't do the steps and we're not able to get them in through the ADA or something like that. We can't get them upstairs to the courtroom. Then I would, I would like to be fair way to put it in order to where it's any of the, any of the building usability.
So if we think it's, and I do not want to put anything up that we think that we can't enforce, but if we think there's an argument for that.
Hey, I'm willing to take that for us versus not have it on.
Yeah, okay, just my caveat is I'm not a lawyer, but.
A.
You're better for that.
A. A, what? I don't see the problem necessarily with tackling an ordinance for that, because sometimes. Rules are put up less for enforcement and more for packing on additional charges. If someone should be, um if someone should break that and then cause a problem. You know, like they came in, they knew they weren't supposed to bring a weapon. They ended up causing a problem, then law enforcement got involved, and so then you have the additional charge of bringing a weapon in. To the city hall when you knew you were not supposed to. So to me, it seems a lot like the like the traction law. Like nobody enforces whether or not you have snow tires. It only becomes an issue if then you cause a wreck or an, in a wreck. And they, in retrospect, say, hey, you weren't wearing snow tires. Here's an additional fine or an additional charge.
Okay, um I don't think I have a problem with this. Uh that that's a conversation.
If we can maybe start with the order, and then if y'all have time, it's on your list to do an ordinance for the overall building. But at least if we could get something, I'd like to get something posted sooner than later on.
Any other costs in your budget?
Well, I'm I'm sorry, the chief isn't here, because I was gonna say, I know we don't own a wand, and so.
I haven't heard a price on that, but we'll we'll put that in the police department.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, if that's something that needs to be purchased through my budget, I was gonna ask.
It doesn't matter, six and we have those.
And I didn't know.
It's their tool.
Yeah, if he had any request for the court to pay towards the cost of having an officer there as a court.
That wasn't requested. Have you, have you gotten a cost on a wand, uh chief? Okay, all right.
And I was just asking whether you needed me to allocate any cost in my budget towards having an officer on station. During in the court session. So that, e- essentially what it does is during that time period, it turns that officer into a court marshal, if you will, so that they're the marshal for the court.
But what difference does it make whether the police department pays for it or you pay for it?
It doesn't make any difference to me personally, but if it's, if you want to accurately reflect the cost of operating in the municipal court. It's probably fair to the police department to say this, we allocate.
Well, I would say that creates a payroll administrative.
Oh, I don't want it to become my employee for sure.
No, I get it, but if you start sharing costs, then then that breakdown becomes a problem. We already have that problem with with some other things. I'd love that I add to that burden, especially with the new finance manager right now.
Okay, well, and maybe that's something you build into your budget to say an allocation of a certain number of hours per year. For an officer to serve as the court. Support, if that's, if that works for y'all.
That would, that would work if you has enough officers to do it.
Yeah, well, and that's why the other, and just so you'll know, I've asked for an allocation of budget in terms to hire private security. In the event that your officers are not available, and we know that in advance. And my thought would be if we don't know that in advance and we feel there's a risk, we will not open the court.
I think we, well, that's that's a good point, but I I think we have money for that to happen about four times a year. Four of the twelve, as an example.
Okay, um other than that, the only other thing, the increase, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you have about like the the travel conferences and stuff like that. I think it's important for my court clerk Hannah to have the opportunity to continue her education and learning as to proper procedures and stuff. The court laws are changing. There's a lot that's gonna be going on in the General Assembly this year related to municipal court operations.
I need to change my notes to reflect our conversation uh that you expected. Uh we'll need more education for the court clerk.
Yeah.
And you uh will also, you know, be attending conferences.
I will, and in the past, I'll just, you know, in the past. Any of you've been around know, I didn't do this for the money, but in the past, when I was in private practice, I was subsidizing. As the mayor's often done too, personally, the cost of me attending these conferences and stuff. And so while I'm not unhappy to continue doing that, I would appreciate the support of not having to do it. I think that's what it is.
For travel, then we increased to a thousand for education.
For education to go, because the both the CAMCA Colorado. Associated Municipal Court Administrators or something like that.
You were just.
Right, CAMCA and then the Colorado Municipal Judge Association, they both have trainings at late, well, we have two conferences for the judges per year. And then I think CAMCA does two trainings per year. Okay, so well, that's just in case if there's like two.
If we agree, I'm gonna increase, I'm going to add in special services, which we had zeroed out. Actually, they've been zeroed out forever. And uh, so.
Well, and I'd love to know, somebody tell me what that sixteen hundred forty three dollars. I'm just curious, but.
You just, you just look it up by by the account number, in the budget, and it will tell us.
And and so, yeah, but other than that, I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, I'll let y'all get on to your things.
Any questions for the judge? Okay.
And so I'm going to put this on an order from the court. Chief Chana, as we talked about that while you weren't in in here with us, I'm gonna create an order and Lori's got it on her wishlist. For an ordinance to be able to do it for the building overall. And if it's helpful, I'm happy to find out, you know, with the other municipal courts, how, you know, if they, because some of them are just adopting. The city's security policy that they already have. And maybe that'd be helpful to see if if the other cities have done it by policy instead of ordinance or whatever.
I I have legal advice, but I need to do it by ordinance, so I, I think I, this is one I'll.
Besides, we don't have a security policy, so.
Well, that's what I said, but it, sometimes it's easier to adopt policy than an ordinance. That's right. Policies are living things. And for giving you more money than you asked for.
I don't know, Tim, there was kind of a problem. You're gonna need it before this is over. Okay, the next thing is, uh, we're gonna talk about the kind of the capital uh, needs that we're considering. And we'll go over those for the people on Zoom, uh, street department.
Can I, can I explain why, why, why we do this exercise? So as you go through each department's budget, you're gonna see things, you're gonna see requests. Uh, the reason we do this capital prior prioritization list is so that, as the mayor said, this, this is a very. There's a lot of requests in the budget, so we have to get to the point where we're zeroing out something. We say we can't afford this this year. This helps us with the big capital expenditures. This helps us prioritize what we, the city council thinks might be a better priority. Which ones should we bump up? Which ones might not actually happen in twenty twenty four? So the reason, that's the reason we do this, and these are not gonna be a separate thing. They'll be in each department's budget. If we can find enough money to do it, and that's why we take a moment and prioritize what we're gonna put in the budgets. So with that, we are starting, so there there aren't capital improvements for all budgets. Right, so there's no, uh, there's no capital improvement request for climbing, for example. There's, that's just staffing. But we, Mayor Naimet this morning went over what departments have capital requests and he prepared this so we could talk about it.
Street Department Vacuum Unit, they, they really do need this, but it's two hundred thousand dollars, but we we've been doing five year leases on. On most equipment, so we advertise that at about forty thousand dollars a year. It's approximate. Uh, and I put that, add that in, you'll see it in their budget, and so we'll have to decide. You know, and they also uh, really need a service truck, which I think is less than fifty thousand dollars. We saw some for last year used ones, but good. For forty three thousand, forty six thousand, but I still needed to to plug some things in the budget here. So I've added fifty thousand dollars to their leasing line item. Uh, for street department. You'll see that when we do the street department's budget, so just something to keep in mind. Uh, the service truck is something they they say they really need, but I suspect they can live without. Uh, the vac unit, they have not, no way to clear culverts right now to either clear, clear the uh. The the storm sewers, they have to use the vacuum for that, and then culvers, they they use the pressure hose. Uh, to clear that. These units would do both those things and we don't have that. So um, we have kind of relied on like Parkville to help us at times. Uh, CDOT's helped us a couple of times, but we have to depend on what the availability of what they can do rather than scheduling ourselves. So definitely all of those things. Uh, incidentally, we looked at a. We looked at a vacuum truck. They had this whole truck and it had every bell and whistle on it you possibly imagine. But it was like five hundred thousand dollars, you know, and we just, you know, I told those guys, because I went to watch. To to talk to them at the demo and I said, we're not gonna buy that, you know, that's, that's not in our budget. What we wanna see is is some choices uh, in terms of what's available. So what I want to opt for is the the least expensive, which is a unit that stands alone by itself and goes on a trailer. Or they can make it so it will be pull onto our hook truck, one of our Mack hook trucks. And so that they can move around with that, and that's the direction we're to go. So I've seen it for a hundred and sixty thousand that go on a trailer. And that might be an option we consider, we, but we have to get pricing on these things first. So I've 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 ballparked it at two hundred thousand dollars. Fire department, this one's uh, real interesting. Uh, they, they need a brush truck. They they've got two brush trucks. One of them's like a nineteen ninety eight, you know, Dodge brush truck. A brush truck is a, it's basically a, a big pickup truck that has some, a water thing on it and it has all kinds of equipment. It's basically going out for brush fires. And uh, and and it's very versatile. This new one that they're looking at is, is, is much heavier duty. It's on an F five fifty chassis. That may not be meaningless to you, but the average pickup trucks at F one fifty. And the three quarter tons, two fifty, and then a full ton uh, pickup trucks are three fifty. This is a five fifty. It's a big bad boy with all wheel drive. And uh, so this would be, and this would be mostly for use in county. Because right now we have the type three engine that can go out, out on deployment, and we have a tactical tender go out on deployment. We don't need to be sending brush trucks out on deployment. And there are a couple of reasons for that. The nuances that are, they can send uh, the type three with three people. And they can send the the uh, the tender with two people, but a brush truck requires four people. Go figure, but that's what the, that's what the federal government requires. So brush trucks, you know, cause a problem in terms of deployment, in terms of the number of people you have to sit up. Now we get reimbursed for all of it and they get paid very well, so it's great for the firefighters, you know, and it works out well for us. But um, anyway, that's where we are in that. But here's why I have question marks there. What we're debating at the fire management board is, we have about five hundred thousand dollars sitting in the fire fund balance right now. And we expect that to expand with this summer's revenues. So we're thinking about, why don't we just pay for this thing and 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 doesn't hit any budgets? So that's, and we're meeting again uh, this Thursday. And that's one of the things on our agenda is to make a decision about that, and I would support that. Why leave that money sitting there? I mean, you know, you, there are always good reasons to have money in reserve, but um, this is a need. Um, so we've added a type three engine this year and another type one engine, so we we've done a great job for our fire department. But now we're opening a southern fire station. I mean, the 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 possible expansion of this fire department is um. It's problematic in terms of budgets.
Is there grant funding available for a brush truck?
There's no grant funding available for anything with wheels anymore. It used to be you could get grants to buy equipment and anymore you can't do it. Uh, you can get grants for all kinds of protective gear and training and a lot of different things. But for actual equipment on wheels, they just all drive up.
And then how does it work with the county? Since that drives would be in the county, not in the city.
We just do a seventy thirty split. But in this case, the fire fund balance is no split. It's just, it's money that's available to the, to the fire fund. Uh, to use and there's no calculation of split.
There's enough money to cover a brush truck.
Yes, yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that's the direction we go. We'll see. If we have to put something in the budget, it won't be anywhere near three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our share, if we say put a hundred thousand dollars down, then we have uh, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we need to finance. Um, then our share, that would be thirty percent, which would be about seventy five thousand dollars that would go into our budget. It's not nothing. You know, it's still a hit to our budget. Uh, remember we have six hundred eighty one thousand dollars for the expansion of this budget and and I think some of the things that are, that are on the. The bottom, underneath the line of this are really gonna hit us all, so we'll discuss that in a minute. Uh, we need uh, city hall, we don't know if we need a boiler or not. But we don't know. The boiler, uh, anybody, has everybody seen that boiler downstairs in the dungeon? It is, it's, it's an interesting experience. Um, and um, and it's ancient.
It's Halloween month. We should all take a, we should all take.
A haunted basement tour.
Well, I I am sure that you were all in that city council meeting where Councilmember Grant. Got up and walked out of the room to find out who was banging in the lobby. We all knew it was just the first time the boiler fired up. It literally sounds like someone is standing in the lobby with a hammer. So, but it, the mayor, so what happened last year is the mayor, the the boiler went out for a little bit. And I'm not kidding, I think the mayor went downstairs, we gave it a swift kick and it started up again. But it 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 got, it got, it got going again, but we realized.
It took us about three days to get it.
You know, and so it was, it was cold enough, we have to send everybody home. They they could not work here and we don't have. First of all, you can't run the building on space heaters. We blow up the car, um, and it's dangerous. So what we realized is we have a vulnerability. The question really is, it's a hundred, we got an estimate last year, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The issue really is that thing may gutter along for a while or it may cock out tomorrow, and so that's what we don't know. And and so the best estimate we have is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I guarantee you, they will find more problems. When they start working on the system, but.
But then the weak point becomes all the radiators. If it's another boiler, it doesn't change the fact that we're still using these, you know, nineteen oh five radiators. Uh, to distribute heat throughout city hall. I don't know if there's a great solution, but.
It sounds like you need an energy assessment done.
Actually, we had one done. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know where it is.
And they didn't point out the.
I have a question about the boiler.
Yeah, please.
Um, is that steam heat that we're dealing with?
Yes.
What about um, converting to hot water heat?
You know, that seems like a possibility. They'd have to put in those baseboard hot water heaters, but the piping is all going up to all the rooms. So that, that's an interesting idea. Yeah, maybe that would be a better way to go.
I wonder if you could get a, us to put it on there.
Uh, to change to hot water heat with baseboards. We may need to do that. I don't know what, I don't know if that changes anything specifically, but it might. We also need to do something with the boiler at the convention center. We don't know if that can be repaired. Sixty thousand dollars is the replacement cost of that boiler at the convention center.
So that's worst case.
That's worst case, but also it's worst case because, and I don't know where we are on the grant request. Um, we have to go to DOLA, um, has has said they would uh, be interested in a grant request.
Yeah, and and I, well, and I think what we would like to do for that request and having some meetings with some community members. Is make that request for a planning, for having actually hiring an architectural firm. Spec out the designs, the conceptual designs C students are working on, so. While I think we will absolutely be doing a December grant request from DOLA, I do not think it will be for just a boiler. I think we're better off maybe requesting a planning grant for that, so. You know, these are things that may end up, you know, these, some of these may end up on the cutting room floor, but we just wanted to put them out there so we can talk about a prioritization.
Well, and it's my understanding, we probably couldn't run this. Building without the boiler during the winter times, right?
I have no incorrect.
Yeah.
Yeah, for now, there's no way we could, there's no way we 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 could work here at city hall and there's no way we could open up the community center without. These boilers, at least in a community center being repaired in this one, I said, continuing to work.
Getting it figured out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, the mayor stepped out for a second. I can, uh, if there's more questions on those, we can talk about those. You see, not every department has a capital request. Those are the capital requests from departments. And then below the other line are the other financial obligations, the biggies that financial obligations and requests. So E nine one one I G A, you know, that's the new dispatch. Uh, this is projections based upon their budget. This is based upon a number of calls. Um, over the past three years, they've, 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 um, what's the word I'm looking for? I don't wanna say prorated, but they they've looked at the number of calls within the city. Um, for the fire department, police department, and they projected that this would, this is our, our share of that cost based upon the number of calls. So we have that I G A, this is their grant budget, that's, I mean.
It's a seven hundred and six thousand dollar budget. I think you guys have seen it. Huge budget for the E nine one one board.
Uh, and then.
But this, we were committed to this, so so it's clear, this, this is not optional. We're committed to these numbers in twenty twenty four. E nine one one or all.
Well, uh, well, the transit authority you are. You just approved that by resolution at the last meeting. The lawyer will be coming with a budget request. Um, now, the regional housing authority is going to be coming with their budget request. We've heard that a couple of times, that's three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is, you know, two A, leftover two A money plus, as the mayor said, question mark, question mark.
Uh, I can't figure out, but they, they have some things in their budget that strike me as absurd in the short term. And you correct me if I'm wrong, because you guys are on the board, and that is they want like five hundred thousand dollars for land acquisition. Great.
So the reason for, and I've talked to Jackie a million times about this. Um, a lot of this boils down to that grant match uh, with. DOLA that we just have to meet. Um, and the reason why that switched up on us is just because of the land uh, differences in what we're using. Um, and.
Now it's a million one plus five hundred thousand, right?
Right.
So it's a million six.
But we also lost some of those properties that the county was using that would have been used.
Now we've added two properties.
Yeah.
And I just saw the blast from the counter today that they have made the deal with the hospital.
Yes, so we still have that, but the school district one doesn't count towards this, because it's not. Uh, city or county. Um. Basically. It's filling the gap of the necessity.
You, you think the one point six million can be applied to one property?
It would be applied to both. I just think, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, so then what is the match?
So I think that's kind of where we're sitting at. Um, I think the county's counting the match of, and I think uh. Jackie met with you, uh, Lori, a little bit more about this, but. Um, the county's counting their match of the administrative burden that includes like the insurances, the. Um, budgetary parts of it that I don't quite fully understand. Um, and I need to get the full numbers on, probably get tomorrow to be honest. Um, but a, a lot of administrative parts of it that.
They're looking at in in kind match based on their administrative burden.
So that basically, I, from my understanding, they are using that to claim a match. And then we are filling in the rest, so they're in kind donation of, well, we're doing the inspections, the audits for the budget. The management, et cetera, et cetera, which makes sense. It's traditionally, I know some county does it, and I think Chico County does it as well. Um, where they manage the regional housing authorities budget portion.
Yeah.
They're using that as a match. And then we're basically filling the rest of the match that is required by DOLA with that two hundred thousand. And in addition, we're hiring uh, an additional staff person to do management, which we'll figure out tomorrow what that really looks like.
So we don't know what this number's gonna be.
I think the number should be the same ask, it's just the allocations might differ slightly depending on.
They want three hundred thousand dollars in addition to two A money?
No, I think it's, you get two A money, subtract whatever over the budget we came um. around three hundred thousand is probably where we're gonna end up, yeah.
So two of A money, we're probably going to be putting out about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
And that this is approximate. We know the seventy thousand, that's absolute. We don't know about the hundred thousand until we get to the end of the year for for two A.
And and once we get that outside of budgeted match, so whatever we get over the budget, uh well, we can my assumption, we can subtract that, and that sounds reasonable to me, we can subtract that from the total ask that's being asked.
Yeah.
And then we can come out with the total.
So let's just say we're looking at an additional hundred thirty thousand dollars in burden. So you can see what's what's fixing to happen to this budget.
Of course.
Okay, we got, we have uh two hundred thirty thousand dollars here, another eighty three thousand dollars here, another hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is eating our six hundred eighty one thousand dollars alive, especially if you figure about half of that is going towards employee pay.
Yeah.
Uh we're, we got a problem.
Well, and what I, we we have two things. Budgets are pretty simple. Revenues and expenses. So you know, we're looking at, we want to do all these things. And we're looking at the property taxes, and we say we also want to reduce the mills by X percent. We, you know, so that's why we need to talk to the assessor about what the projections are. If we decide that these are have to haves, then the only other lever is is revenue. So uh I think and you know, the Childcare Coalition reminded me that they made an ask, it could be thousand dollars. J B Housing Trust is going to make an ask.
Oh, I forgot about J P Housing Trust.
J B Housing Trust and
How much are they asking for?
Ten thousand. And C four
I didn't remember what C four asked for.
For four thousand.
Four thousand.
I can look that up right now.
Okay, uh you you guys are all on the the Leadville Urban Mill Authority Board. What they were saying the other night, I pushed back, they didn't, they weren't listening, is that uh they wanna they're talking about approximately ninety seven thousand dollars, and they want the city to write up a check in January for that amount of money. So they have the money in their account. And I I'll vote against that. I just will. Because as we've never handled it that way in the past. What we've done in the past is we fulfilled our obligation of the Leadville Authority during the year. And then we've done it, and and so we always overspend, we always budgeted uh just as a placeholder, like twenty five, I think last year we budgeted thirty thousand dollars. It doesn't matter what the number is. We're gonna overspend whatever it is. We could put in a a probably a a more realistic number. Um but uh we always end up doing a supplemental at the end of the year. So I just, I have, I I'm just having a real problem with that approach. I, in fact, I can't I can't live with writing a ninety seven thousand dollar check.
The only other thing the mayor and I talked about this morning to let you know, that's not the only subsidy that we provide for the Leadville Urban Mill Authority. So while we have a new city attorney, our prior city attorney Linda Mishaw has agreed to serve as counsel for the Leadville Urban Mill Authority. So she's gonna continue as their attorney. The city actually pays that pursuant to the I G A. We we pay that bill, we pay Linda Mishaw's bill. And I've agreed to continue to pay it. She, you know, wrote to me to clarify that. So we also pay the legal fees for that. For the I G A, but I wanna say like, that doesn't come out of the ninety six thousand dollars that they're asking.
Right.
So that's in addition to the next. I believe someone has said that, I'm not sure. I, it it's in our I G A, so I don't really care if it's statutory or not, we have an obligation.
I think Linda put that in writing to us a year ago. Uh her interpretation of statute and what was required, but it isn't the I G A. So either way, uh you know, we'll pay her, pay her uh fees.
I mean, so the must haves are transit, because we can't get out of that, and the E nine one one. And somewhat.
Well, the Regional, Regional Housing Authority, we have signed on to the Regional Housing Authority.
And it's, yeah, I don't, I don't know that that was negotiable um outside of you know, no additional past meeting that match grant. Um so, and that's already, we're looking at almost four hundred four hundred thousand uh of our six hundred thousand.
Oh, God. About about four hundred and fifty thousand, actually.
Yeah. And then we're missing from the compensation of these owes.
Well, uh you mean what we have in reserves or?
What we have in the reserves, but we're willing to
For the twenty twenty four budget?
Yeah. We 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 actually can put a line item in in revenue of transfer of funds. We can do that.
There, actually, I think there there was that, hold on a second. Where was our revenue sheet?
I saw something in the budget today, and it was a cost line, it was a, it was a and it was like six hundred, it was over six hundred thousand dollars. I looked at it, I thought it's, it was a transfer cost, and I didn't know what that was.
Oh, um yeah, this is where it's at. Okay, uh if you go to page three that we were talking about uh on the revenues.
Yeah.
Look at the last line, nine zero zero two, transfer from general fund balance.
Right, right. So you, I think Tim's right, that we could but you know, how long can we do that? How how's this, you mean, I agree that we may have to do that.
Yeah.
To get through this year, but all it does is get us through this year. Now, sure, I hand off to a new mayor, he can have that problem next year. Uh but I don't know how fair that is. Uh but it it is, thank you, Tim, that is a real possibility.
I mean, some, another way to look at this too is, how many of the asks are recurring asks, right? I don't think, well I don't know if the Regional Housing Authority is gonna make the same recurring asks of three hundred.
Oh, it may not, because that's a match against a a particular grant. That's a good point.
So
Uh but we know E nine one one is recurring ads.
Of course. And and the Transit Authority is also recurring.
That's a three, three year projected cost right now.
It goes down.
Oh, it goes down to like forty seven thousand in the second and third years, you're right.
Yeah, so I don't know that that's, I mean, honestly, I think that's a good point. Um that for some of these, you know, non-recurring, hopefully, um costs, we could totally look at, like, could we pay this off a line item reserve? I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me for non-recurring. And then we can go, and and I think the Childcare Coalition, I'm not sure, but I think that's non-recurring. I think they're kind of from my understanding, uh trying to get their um coalition situated where they can set up the infrastructure to have childcare. Um
I understand what they really want. Right now, it's just some sort of sustainable
Yeah.
you know, um funding that they can count on. I do get that. I mean, I I I wanna support that. Um you know, I've attended a lot of their meetings, I I haven't been to the last couple, but
So I was gonna say, just for purposes of timing, it is eight thirty. So one the reason the mayor put the bottom section on is just you can see what else is out there. This discussion of other funding requests is gonna be at your last possession. We don't have to make those decisions tonight.
This is informative.
But we would like on the guidance on capital needs, uh if there's any consensus that we um have a priority for those, please let us know. If there, if if there's a preferred priority, it's something, and like I said, it needs to end up on the cutting room floor. If there's any um strong feelings from the council as to priorities, please.
Tracy, Dana, any thoughts on what we've discussed?
I I just have a quick question. Um and maybe Tracy, you can answer this, but your point about um looking into hot water heat via baseboard, is that something that would still require a repair of the City Hall boiler, or is that a separate project that would go, that would cut the boiler out of the picture?
The boiler is the primary issue. And and it's not like the boiler is not working. We had a problem with it last year. It it works every single day. It's will it crap out on us? Maybe, maybe what I'd like to do, we have uh Brian from Mountain Heating. He he comes and helps us work on this boiler, and he he knows it pretty well. Uh maybe we should get an opinion from him. Uh because when when it when it broke down last year, he had to come and replace a part. Actually, I helped him replace it, but I was his assistant, his lovely assistant. And uh um he knows a lot about this boiler system, and it gets inspected every year um by the state. So maybe we should get an opinion from from him about what is the, you know what is the need? So let let me, let me work on that in the meantime. Convention Center, we don't know if that's a repair or replacement. Uh so uh if it's a repair, you were saying he thought it was about twenty thousand dollars, right?
That was what the estimate was previously. Maybe we can have your your um
Brian, what's that? That's a good idea. Yeah, he's, okay, I'll call Brian tomorrow. Now, he won't come out tomorrow, I assure you. Like last last time I were, I think at my house, it took like two or three weeks to get him out there, but he's he's a great guy, so.
I think the only difference with a hot water boiler, it's it doesn't require inspection like a steam boiler does.
Oh, I bet you're right.
It's a little bit safer, it's a little bit easier to maintain.
All together.
Oh, yeah, it would be a complete replacement. And it would be about a fourth the size of the one we have down there.
Yeah.
And probably a tenth in the size of the original one that was down there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank, thanks for being with us on Zoom, appreciate it. Let's go get some dinner.
You need to send out those documents next time, please.
I'm sorry. I didn't get these finished until like five thirty, so I apologize, you know.
Okay.
All right. Any final thoughts?
Um I will not be able to tell you the time on the twenty fourth. Um so maybe I uh
I'll send the documents out to everybody that we're gonna be covering on the twenty fourth. Incidentally, Dana, Dana, can you hear me okay? On the twenty fourth, my partner Judy has a a medical procedure in Colorado Springs. And I hope I'm back here at six o'clock, but if I'm not, go on without me.
Okay, I'll be doing it remotely, because I'll be right back in this chair on the twenty fourth.
Okay, thank you very much. I I don't know, you know, I don't know that we need a a lead person to to these conversations. Once we get into the budgets, you know, uh this this we did, because there are nuances involved, and the budgets themselves. Uh the notes, I think, that I put in there will be a good, good, and I'll still be, I'll still be there. I just don't know if I can be there at six o'clock, that's the problem.
We'll have these numbers before the twenty fourth, so I can look at that.
Actually, I hope I have them.
I will formulate
Within the next week.
I'll formulate whatever Y K sevens are.
Thank you.
And I'll get that to Lori.
Appreciate it.
Time off and I'm sure we're in, I don't get much of that, so.
Thank you, guys.